John Coleman. Kim Crupper.
Here.
April Fabella. Ronnie Mains.
Here.
Jason Payne.
Here.
Jenna Smith.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of, special meeting of June 12th, 2025 to order. And just so everyone is aware, we do have one counselor on Zoom to make sure that we have our quorum. We have several who are out tonight, but Jason is via Zoom and the statute has been met. I'd like to welcome all the guests who are here. If you have not signed in, please do so. Okay, in that case, I'd like to ask Kim to lead us in invocation and then let's do pledge allegiance.
Father, Son, and Thank you for the day you blessed us with, another day of life, and just bring us all here together tonight to conduct the city's business, that we, that we conduct this in a manner in a respect that for our citizens ourselves and just what we do to do good, honest business. Thank you for the day that it's been, a beautiful day, and for Jason who's traveling away, keep him safe with his family and return him home as safe, and then watch over each and every one of us here tonight and forgive us for sins where we fail. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The only announcement I have is again on Saturday, which is William Arnold Founder's Day. There'll be a all-day event at the William Arnold Founder's Cabin. And if you show up at 10:00 a.m., you can see the cannon get shot. And I have the honor and privilege to be the one shooting the cannon this year, so that sounds like fun. Okay, we're going to get started on old business. And the first thing we're going to do is the second reading of ordinance 2025-07. And it is adopting the supplement code of ordinances. If you remember, we received all the updated ordinances, we did not pass the ordinance to accept them. And I'm going to ask Addison to read the ordinance and we'll take a motion.
Do I need to read all of this?
Yeah, Luke does.
Okay. Ordinance number 2025-07, an ordinance of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky, enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances. Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio has completed the supplement of the code of ordinances of the city of Williamstown, which supplement contains all ordinances of a general nature enacted since the prior supplement of the code of ordinances of this municipality. And whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation has recommended the revision or addition of certain sections of the code of ordinances, which are based on or make reference to sections of the Kentucky revised statutes. And whereas it is the intent of the city council to accept these updated sections in accordance with the changes of the law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky, section one, that the supplement of the code of ordinances of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky, as submitted by American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio, be adopted by reference as if set out in its entirety. And section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its date of passage approval and publication as required by law.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I would make a motion we adopt ordinance 2025-07 as read and presented.
Okay, motion by Counselor Crupper. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Counselor Mains. Any discussion? Roll call.
Kim Crupper.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Jason Payne.
Yes.
And Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next, old business. Second reading of ordinance 25, 2025-08, amending the garbage rate and levying the monthly emergency medical services charge. This is the second reading that will go into effect after the motion and acceptance. Basically, the rate of the wastewater has gone up to $21 per month from Republic. And again, that's not the city imposing that, that is countywide charge increase from Republic based on our contract the county has. And also, we are eliminating the $16 per month charge that the city levies regarding emergency services. Again, you will still get a bill in July because you get paid in the year, but it is effective as July 1st. Addison?
City of Williamstown, Kentucky, ordinance number 2025-08, an ordinance of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky, amending section 94.18A of the Williamstown Code of Ordnances and ordinance number 2024-04, as they relate to the monthly charge for garbage pickup and disposal service and levying a monthly charge for emergency medical services and/or ambulance services. Be it ordained by the city of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, as follows. Section one, ordinance number 2024-04, and section 94.188 of the Williamstown Code of Ordnances, are hereby amended as follows, with the words and numbers being added indicated by a single solid line beneath them, and the words and numbers being deleted indicated by a single broken line through them as required by KRS 83A point zero six zero, section three. Section A, the city levies a monthly charge for such garbage pickup and disposal service at a rate of removal of $16 to $21 per month to be levied against each separate dwelling unit and each separate business, professional, commercial, or industrial enterprise. The charge should be included and made a part of the utility bill of each user. However, if more than one residential unit or business, professional, commercial, or industrial unit is included in one, in one utility bill, the charge for such garbage pickup and disposal service shall be equal to the individual charge multiplied by the number of such units. Removal of section B, the city levies a monthly charge for each such emergency medical services EMS and/or ambulance services at a rate of $16 per month to be levied against each separate dwelling unit and each separate business, professional, commercial, or industrial enterprise. The charge should be included and made a part of the utility bill or each utility bill, however, if more than one residential unit or business, professional, commercial, or industrial unit is included in one utility bill, the charge for such emergency medical services EMS and/or ambulance services shall be equal to the individual charge multiplied by the number of such units. Section two, the provisions of this ordinance are severable, and the invalidity of any provision of the ordinance shall not affect the validity, the validity of any other provision thereof, and such other provisions shall remain in full force and effect as long as they remain valid in the absence of those provisions determined to be invalid. Section three, all ordinances of parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section four, this ordinance shall be effective as soon as possible according to law. And section five, this ordinance shall be published in full part pursuant to KRS 83A point zero six zero, section nine.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept?
I made that motion, mayor.
Motion made by Counselor Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Crupper. Any discussion? Roll call.
Kim Crupper.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Jason Payne.
Yes.
And Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. And we are going on to new business. Correction and approval of meeting minutes from regular council meeting, June 2nd, 2025. Has everybody had a chance to go through the minutes? If not, take a couple minutes. Take a couple minutes to go through the minutes. Take a couple minutes to go through the minutes.
Mayor, on page two. I see a couple of corrections you probably want to take care of under. There were, it's April's name is, probably needs to be corrected from not Henson, but Fabella?
Good eyes, that is her, I think her maiden name, but.
Oh, okay. I did not know that. I just didn't want the confusion.
No relation.
I just wanted to clean that up for your end. I had no idea of maiden.
But you're right, we should clean that up.
Okay.
I guess, do we need to table these until that's corrected or no?
No, we can make a motion to accept that's corrected.
Page three, it'd be the same thing down under adjournment.
Yep.
So I make a motion to accept the minutes from the June 2nd meeting with the corrections to April's last name.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to accept the minutes from June 2nd, 2025 by Counselor Jenna Austin-Smith. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Ronnie Mains. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Kim Crupper.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Jason Payne.
Yes.
And Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving along. So I want to, the next two, these will be first readings. They are, I think I spoke a little bit at the caucus meeting. The zoning office manager, zoning administrator slash office manager position, which was currently, which was previously held by Laura McClanahan. We started doing, having some interviews on this position. And to be honest with you, I felt although Laura did, you know, an incredible job doing it, it's a, it's a beast. Either one of these positions is a big position. And as I was interviewing candidates and as I was getting my arms around the zoning and the code enforcement in town, I came to the conclusion that I'd like to break these two positions up. And doing so, and I lowered, as you can see, for zoning administrator, lowered the grade from 35 to 30. Changed the, each one of them does for the grading, one does for the job description. And I'd like to separate those up and so I can continue my quest for a zoning enforcement officer. The office manager position, if you will, I put on hold for right now. So if I could get a reading. Addison, which one is first here? So it looks like the job description is first. Really doesn't matter. If you want to read that.
Can you read the whole thing? Or just the beginning and the changes?
You're the attorney. Makes no difference to us. I definitely will read the changes in the first paragraph here and then any of the changes.
Okay, that's what we'll do then.
Okay.
Municipal Order Number 2025-03, a municipal order of the City of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, amending the City of Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures with reference to removing the office manager zoning administrator job description and replacing it with the zoning administrator job description to the Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures Plan. Whereas the city council of the administration of the City of Williamstown recognizes that the city's personnel and procedures must be updated from time to time in order to remain current with the federal and state labor laws, administrative regulations, and accepted personnel practices, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, City of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, as follows. That the Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures Plan is hereby amended with the words and numbers being added indicated by a double line beneath them and the words and numbers being deleted indicated by a straight line through them or shaded as required by KRS 83A dot 060, section three. And the changes shall be incorporated into the Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Authorized position, class title and grade, office manager has been removed and zoning administrator has been left. Grade 35 has been removed and 30 has been added. Job description, class title, office manager has been removed, leaving zoning administrator. On page two, general duties and responsibilities under essential, the following has been removed, shall serve as assistant to the mayor by providing direct support and assistance in specialist administrative activities. Provide support by performing duties such as maintenance of personnel policies, classification plan, typing of personal correspondence, and maintaining records of such, shall handle city inquiries or refer calls or inquiries to the proper personnel for appropriate action and performs other related duties. That has been removed. The remainder of the essential section states, shall administer and enforce the zoning ordinance with essential functions and responsibilities, shall accept and review zoning permit applications and determine compliance with the zoning ordinances and completeness of the application while maintaining a complete file of permits issued, shall investigate alleged violations of the zoning ordinance and advise landowners or applicants of necessary corrective measures, shall identify, inventory, and monitor nonconforming uses, shall review, advise, and make recommendations of the mayor and city council on planning and zoning issues as well as making recommendations to the planning commission relating to amendments to the zoning ordinance and zoning map, attend zoning meetings as needed to report on zoning issues and advise on issues related to zoning administration. Under minimum qualifications, special knowledge, skills, and abilities, knowledge, knowledge of city operations, policies and procedures and operations, knowledge of local government operations and ordinances relating to such, knowledge of modern office equipment, telecommunications equipment, computer hardware and software, the ability to program or maintain equipment, shall have fluent grammar skills in both written and spoken format with the ability to construct from origination all types of written communication. Knowledge of effective avenues to administer and follow procedures and policies established for the position added has been develop and maintain knowledge of Kentucky revised statutes, chapter 100, parentheses zoning, as well as develop and maintain knowledge of aspects of code enforcement. On page three, under abilities. Abilities shall have the ability to operate a variety of office equipment that will enable typing, copying, printing, faxing, and usage of computer hardware and multiple types of computer software. Shall be able to utilize discretion and independent judgment in carrying out a multitude of tasks while being able to work under limited supervision. Shall have the ability to establish and maintain effective personnel and consultative relationships with local government officials, other staff members, staff members of liaison organizations, and representatives of state and federal agencies. Removed from this section is as follows, shall have general knowledge of concepts, theories, principles, and practices of personnel management and ability to assist in developing short and long-term plans for improving operations and attaining more effective agency operations. Remaining in this section is as follows, shall have the ability to maintain and prepare reports added to this section as follows, as well as other types of documents or correspondence in a neat, concise, and accurate manner. Removed from this section, shall have the ability to construct from origination ordinances, resolutions, and municipal orders as directed by mayor, administrative personnel, or city attorney, as well as other types of report, document, or correspondence. Remaining in this section, ability to assist the general public, applicants, developers, and their representatives with zoning inquiries, proposals, and applications while directing the individuals to the property agency for other needed permits. One second. Under additional information, physical requirements of the job. Work is typically performed in an office sitting at a desk or table, must lift light objects less than 25 pounds. Added to this section is as follows, zoning and code enforcement duties may be performed outdoors. Must be able to tolerate various weather conditions, must be able to walk on uneven surfaces when outdoors while performing various zoning duties and code enforcement duties as required of the job. On page four, special licensing requirements, must possess and maintain a valid driver's license issued by the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Added to this section, must perform eight hours of approved continuing education courses yearly to maintain status of zoning administrator. Section two of this municipal order that the Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures Plan is hereby amended to establish and include the job position, job description, and dues of the zoning administrator. The job position, job description, and duties of the zoning administrator are set forth in the above job description, which shall be incorporated into the Personnel Policies and Procedures Plan. Read, moved, and approved by the City of Williamstown, City Council, and City of Williamstown, Kentucky on.
Help me through the second.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the reading. Is there a motion to accept? Or motion to approve?
This is the first.
This is the first reading. Or did you want to have discussion before?
Passing it tonight.
I'm sorry?
A municipal order you.
Oh, you can pass tonight?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, okay. So we will be passing it tonight if it's approved.
Is that correct there?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, my apologies.
Not, I was getting ahead of you.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
The only thing I would say is in this last section, it says dues, and I think it should say duties.
It should be duty, yeah, duties. So we should amend that.
But that's it, okay.
I would make a motion that we adopt and pass the municipal order number 2025-03 as has been presented with the corrections and deletions as read tonight.
Motion made by Counselor Crupper. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Mains. Any discussion? Roll call?
Kim Crupper.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Jason Payne.
Yes.
Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. And then one more municipal order, and what this is, is the. Hold on, this is the classification regarding the new position. 20, 2025-04.
Municipal Order 2025-04, a municipal order of the City of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, amending the City of Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures with reference to revising the classification plan specifically authorized position schedule to the Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures Plan. Whereas the city council of the administration of the City of Williamstown recognizes that the city's personnel policies and procedures must be updated from time to time in order to remain current with federal and state labor laws, administrative regulations, and accepted personnel policies. Now therefore be it ordered by the city council, City of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, as follows. Section one, that the Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures Plan is hereby amended with the words and numbers being added indicated by a double line underneath them and the words and numbers being deleted indicated by a straight line through them or shaded as required by KRS 83A dot 060, section three. And the changes shall be incorporated into the Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Authorized positions, the following are hereby adopted as class title and class grade. The number of authorized positions shall be determined annually during the budget process. Class title, the change is removing office manager from office manager slash zoning administrator, just leaving zoning administrator, and the grade from 35 to 30. Yes, and then section, section two on page three, that the Williamstown Personnel Policies and Procedures Plan is hereby amended to include the revised classification plan specifically authorized position schedule. The revised authorization, authorized position schedule is set forth above shall be incorporated into the Personal Policies and Procedures Plan.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I have one question, Sheriff Mayor. Under your, under your city clerk treasurer, presently that is a grade 35. Will that grade 35 be able to compensate our city clerk treasurer in the current format of your grade classifications in terms of money?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just making sure.
I did check on that.
All right, good enough. That's the only question I have.
Yep. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to adopt municipal order 2025-04 has been presented with the single and only correction in that, in this order.
Motion made by Counselor Crupper. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Jenna Austin-Smith. Roll call? I mean, excuse me, discussion? Roll call?
Kim Crupper.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Jason Payne.
Yes.
And Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we are now down to the big one. So first of all, I want to say thank you. We did a lot of work in a short amount of time working on this budget. So all those, including the superintendents and the people at this table, thank you for your assistance and much appreciated. There are a couple changes that we spotted already that, when we're appropriate, we'll go through them. But at this time, I'm going to open the floor to discussion on the proposed 25, 26 budget. You all should have gotten a copy the day before yesterday.
I think the only thing that I thought might be good to discuss or to bring forward that there was some concern about the fire department budget and if we could kind of just explain that was not cut.
Yeah, so a couple things on that. It was, it was not cut. In fact, it was increased, although the money was spread in different areas. SAF, which was increased from 290,000 to 430 something, I believe. So a lot of the, I should say, some of the fire department expenses or budgets were put in that line on. We also did discover just a few minutes ago that the $110,000 from the county revenue funds that we have, we show as revenue should go into the fire department budget as a line item, an expense to draw off of. So that we're going to add with the reading tonight. So I think you guys should feel pretty good. You got all your capital that you requested. And then we did move your salary chief to the SAF fund, but it's all still there.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So when you're moving your county fire funds of 110,000, of course, that's not an expense, it would be a revenue side of that.
Yeah. Well, and that's, so it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Crystal, we show it as revenue already and it would still go under the fire department as a line to draw off of? Yep. As an expense?
Yeah. Okay.
What is?
It's on page two, if you have to.
Other than that, I did not see. Thank Mr. Rick Willoughby for pointing that out for us today. Thank you. No other discussion, I would be glad to entertain a motion. Keeping in mind, we do have a second reading next Tuesday.
In your revised, uh, spreadsheet you'll be giving us later on, Crystal. The other night, we talked about some of the revenue that needed to be paid for the Industrial Development Authority.
It's all accounted for.
All right, good.
Yes, so what I did, and you'll notice, Kim, on this first page, some of these numbers, me and Viv sent in here the other night trying to think of what revenue we still have out as well, that's not been accounted for.
Sure.
So, we were trying to put in everything that we could think.
Including, if you remember, we had a discussion on the ARC TIF.
Yeah.
Uh, that has been taken care of.
Good.
And that number is reflects in here, is reflected in here as well.
All right.
Oh. Okay, I haven't, uh, okay. Uh, while everyone's still mulling it over, Addison's going to read the ordinance, twenty-two five zero nine.
Ordinance number twenty-two five dash zero nine. An ordinance of the City of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, establishing its departmental budget for the City of Williamstown pursuant to KRS ninety-one A dot oh-three-oh, section ten, for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, and providing that no money shall be expended by or on behalf of the City of Williamstown except in accordance therewith. Being ordained by the City of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky as follows. Section one, pursuant to the requirement of KRS ninety-one A dash dot zero-three-zero, section ten of the City of Williamstown, shall during the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, operate and be operated pursuant to the departmental budget attached tier two and made a part thereof by reference, and providing that no money shall be expended by or on behalf of the City of Williamstown except in accordance therewith. Section two, the provisions of this ordinance are severable, and the invalidity of any provision of this ordinance shall not affect the validity of any other provision thereof, and such other provisions shall remain in full force and effect as long as they remain valid in the absence of those provisions determined to be invalid. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent to the extent of such conflict. Section four, this ordinance shall be effective as soon as possible according to law. Section five, this ordinance shall be published in summary pursuant to KRS eighty-three A dot oh-six-oh, section nine.
Thank you, Addison. I know it's a big move. We still got one more reading.
Something that, uh, between now and then, Mayor. I'm still trying to, uh, you, you can work on that, let me know, uh, your cable department. Keeping with some carryover. I guess I'm trying to figure out, you may have to make a pilot transfer to keep that to balance, but look that over pretty close.
So, there's still money not transferred there as well?
So, you're setting on some money, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so, when we was here the other night, too, we looked at that as well, because we haven't transferred, we know since February, maybe before.
Okay.
So, I kind of, that's what we kind of did with the cable, too, because it wasn't a negative. So, I'm talking to Vivian, I'm like, we're gonna have to borrow, you know, we're gonna have to borrow. So, we kind of went and ran some reports, and...
That's still, that's still out there in the auditing, you're trying to tell me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, a lot of that, like I said, no money has been transferred out of revenue to our cable since we know February fourth, sure.
All right.
So, I think with those numbers, it'll be close.
Or better.
Or better.
Hopefully a lot better.
As of what we've got, and we went conservative because we was nervous, but I think, once we can get all those transfers.
Okay.
Make it look a little better.
Yeah, and I also want to tell you, overall, and when it comes to the general revenue for the budget, we budgeted the same amount that was budgeted as last year, and we are finding that even this year, we are getting more revenue than what we budgeted last year. And so, we will, we know we're going to get more. That's a very conservative figure.
Well, I understand, but you know, it's on the paper here.
I get it.
When you get your cable revenue against your cable expenditures, and then, as, you know, I'm still, I'm still digesting that capital expense down there, two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand.
I know you have a little hot brain on that.
Well, it, it will give you that sometimes.
Yeah, I hear you.
But, you know, I, I just pointing it out, if it's something. I know you all have looked at, over many a different way, but it's unusual when you don't show annually that you may potentially have to have a pilot transfer. Very rare.
Yes.
And we still may end up having to do that.
Yeah.
Hopefully not.
Right, right, I understand. But, but still, it's, I, I don't know, it's been rare to see you don't have a pilot transfer.
Looking at this, Kim, I feel that the superintendents, they really did the city good.
Surely.
I feel, holding back money this last, I think that helped.
Well, and that's true, and you, and I have said that a number of times, that our superintendents are, are very conscious about their departments, very much so. I, I do, I've mentioned that a number of times, but, but when you're seeing numbers on paper, you know, that's what I'm pointing at.
I think everybody's waiting on you to make a motion, Ken.
You don't need a motion for a first reading.
You don't, oh, you don't?
No, you don't.
Oh, no. Done.
No, you had your first reading, and you've had that.
You're right.
So, I appreciate you waiting all the time.
I would have been, I would have motioned to adjourn. Okay, any other discussion on that budget? First reading is completed, thank you. I think that concludes our agenda, if I'm correct. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Kim Crupper.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Jason Payne. Jenna Smith.
Yes.
We got adjourned?